To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Motion to second, discussion and questions. All fair to say aye?
Aye.
Both no. And the minutes of the May 5 meeting, do I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion or questions on the minutes? Got a motion to second to approve, all in fair to say aye?
Aye.
Both no. And claims bills in between of one hundred and fifty seven thousand six sixty one twenty five. Do I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any questions on the bills in between? Got a motion to second to approve, all in fair to say aye?
Aye.
Both no. And the third claims, I have a motion on that to approve, the amount of two hundred and sixty seven thousand seven thirty six seventy eight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second to approve, any questions on the claims, discussion?
Yeah, I got one. You know, the street shop, there's a lot of oxygen settling on these projects. I'm just kinda curious why we've never, they've never gone to the larger sized cylinders like oxygen settling. It would be way cheaper. I guess maybe that's a question, I just need to get with Harley and Billy and find out. Cause we spent a lot of money for oxygen settling, I mean, double what we should've.
Okay. Thanks Wes. Any other questions, discussion?
Um, I was just, what is there, create our first payment of the plunge, is that right? What is this one here? Yes. Harley?
Yes, the Evans plunge first payment is part of the bills, yes.
Okay.
I thought it was the sum.
Uh, as is the Simons on the street projects, so one hundred and thirty eight thousand of that, the three hundred thousand dollar amount is for the gutters, pans, concrete work with Simons that was done. And I think Hills probably has one in here.
You do?
Yeah.
And I think that is their final in the amount of one hundred and forty five thousand one ninety six. So, just under three hundred thousand was for the two street project, so that just blew. That was bid last year, it got snowed out.
The irrigation project, is that the contract we have on page six? For the water at the airport, is that what that is?
The Angostura reservoir, that's where our annual water agreement with, with the Angostura Water District.
There was another one, the pressure washer, just, I don't know how we're doing it now, we just bought one with a plunge and we bought another one, I don't know if that's something that we could've shared or not.
I think this one's at the airport, isn't it?
Yeah.
Pressure washer?
Yes.
Yep. Any other questions or discussion on the bills? Curve claims, yep. Got a motion to second to approve, all in fair to say aye?
Aye.
Both no. And communication from the public, is Steve here yet?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, there you are.
Yes.
We'll hit you right away, Steve.
No problem. Is this fun?
You bet.
Um, I'm here to represent two buildings that exposed to me a year ago by the Johnson Brothers. That's all I'm gonna say. Um, but, these two buildings, um, I would like to offer to the city of Hot Springs to bring my talent to save the buildings and restore them. And, I have several things in mind, but, Jan and Kara brought to my attention how you, the city is really fixing up the curb appeal. And then the structure of the building, I would be glad to meet with the structural engineers and meet with the council constantly to see what we can do to fix the buildings. But this is something I've done all my life. I've done the construction since I was thirteen years old. My grandfather exposed me to restored buildings. I've done the construction, uh, all my life. I've been in a lot of businesses, because of society, we won't get into that. But, I sure would like to get on board with the city to communicate and meet with the committees and stuff to save these buildings. Now, the other thing I would like to show to the council, I have several people on board that wanna bring artwork to the town and the buildings that's real close to city hall. You have two very beautiful windows right there that we could do a shadow box and I could bring artwork on right away, a couple artists and stuff. And, get the curb appeal up first, then, meet with, um, I've taken all winter to get a group together, it won't just be me. This is a big project. And, um, get the dirt that building needs, clean up their first building, reassure, restore the roof, get the roof sealed and take care of them and make the structure really sound so the city of Hot Springs can be. That's what I'm here for.
You need to leave that cracked.
How do you plan on, what do you plan on doing to the structure to make sure that it's sound number one? And that, uh, you don't have any critters in and out?
Um, first thing I did, because I've done concrete work all my life, first thing I did a year ago was walking around the structure of the building to make sure the outside of the building is less sandstone and the foundation is solid. Okay? Then, the roofs were compromised and obviously we all know we need to fix the roofs. But, get in and clean them up and see what we need to do because, um, the concrete foundation is there. And the first building that I'm talking about right next to city hall, I don't know who took out the structure wall, long time ago, that building took that. The only thing that the Johnson Brothers did right is they started to clean off the roof so it didn't hold water and they took the stucco off inside so they took the weight off of that, so it wouldn't hold water. Yeah? It's leaking. But, the structure is there, I went in late last fall and put one support in where the bearing wall was, it saved the building. Now, is it safe for the public? Oh no, had a lot of work for that. But I would gladly go in and work with your engineer and keep everybody up board and make it safe and clean them up and get them ready to save.
Where you put that barrier in, or that stabilizer in, is it clear from the ceiling to the basement?
It actually, what, actually what there is, that building, there's two, there's actually three phases. There, there's a wood floor up to where the concrete floor is and right where that concrete floor is, that's an actual bearing footing and that was the original structural wall and the studs were all cut off. And that stud is on the structural wall to stop it from saying. I raised it up three inches and stopped, cause I realized I had to meet with you guys before I wanted to part it. But at least stopped it from collapsing in on itself. And it can be raised, it will sure make, the bearing wall can put back and again, with your engineer going back in and make sure that that concrete slab where I put it was the original footing, which I'm sure it was.
What engineering company are you working with?
I wanna, I just, I wanna work with the city and, and do that for the day. Believe me, this is very ground floor to get that part back.
Now that's the building next to the city hall.
Yes.
The one down on the other end.
Yes.
The SOS building.
Yes.
That outer wall is already.
Yes.
Compromised.
Yes.
And it's, looks like it's ready to come down, if not, right on the verge.
And, and that's why I'm here today to get this started and to really save that and hopefully that, that.
How are you going to be able to restructure that wall? Cause my understanding is, is the foundation was cut out and painted.
Actually, the foundation wasn't cut out, long before the Johnson Brothers bought the building, got in there and dug up the dirt. I don't understand that part of it, you can't go underneath the original foundations, you just never can. So that dirt's gotta be brought back in and then as that dirt's brought in and stabilized the original footing, which is only six feet down and the dirt was taken out long before that, lower than that.
Yep.
Then, go ahead and take time to put those foundations back in and make the structure sound. So.
When was the last time you was in that building?
Pardon?
That SOS building, when was the last time you was in there?
Um, just several weeks ago, like with Jan.
You can see the footing in the front of the building laying on the ground.
Yes, I have.
It's not on the building no more.
Yes. Yes, I have and, and actually last winter, when I exposed this product, project at this point, you kidding me? So.
And you think you can fix that?
Yes.
What are you expecting from us?
Just permission to meet with the council, educate and just let you know the steps that I would recommend to save that building because the front part of the building by the sidewalk, I can't believe it has lasted as long as it has. But the sandstone, the rest of the building, the wood structure, the beams that are in there, unbelievable. But, it's such a shame that a couple men, when they're compromised, I guess.
So financially, how do you?
Um, I'm going to meet with people, grants, get it in, but my first concern is to stabilize the building. I've got dirt lined up, I've got equipment come in and just get the dirt back in here to stop the foundation from, um, from eroding. That's the first thing.
Can I ask a question, I guess?
Yep.
Who owns the building? Do the Johnson Brothers still own the building at this point?
Yes, yes, they do. And how I got, how I got involved with it is that they're my neighbors and they know what I can do and they come to me because two people they brought in before this, they didn't have to. And believe me, when I come in here last winter and I said, do you guys really got, realize what you got involved with, you know? And then, again, all went along, we had a long winter, I wanted to at least stabilize the building throughout the winter and, and it just didn't work out.
Is the roof on the SOS building compromised too?
It leaks.
It leaks, but it's not compromised because a gentleman before, he really made some unbelievable investments. He's got steel structure up there and half of it is unbelievable. But where he stopped, from there on, it leaks, yes.
So did, on the other one next to the city hall, did you get all the windows covered up and the holes to keep animals and such out?
That's.
Already?
And that's the first step that I wanna do. I want, I'd wanna do that at the beginning.
So it hasn't been done yet?
Oh, it hasn't.
The ones he's talking about is not the one right next to city hall on the downhill side, the one that the pigeon problems with.
That's the one.
It's the one that we have the court order on for demolition, it's the, one of them that he's talking about, one of the two buildings, yes.
Are they gonna turn these buildings over to you when you're done?
What, what they wanna do, and they've already turned all of them because they've done some dumb things. Um, what they want me to do is make them structurally sound and present to the city and get people in to use the building, but like I told them, until we make these buildings sound, he, he, he just, the public can't use them.
I think the community action building is already at its point of being demolished, isn't it?
We were trying to get it demolished, we did not get a bid to take it down.
Right. I just would like to meet with the committee to show them it really is not at the point of demolition, it really isn't.
And is, is the investment for that building, is it viable?
It's, and like again, I looked at the sand walls and the, the actual concrete foundation, that's savable. As far as the wood, uh, they've bought all the wood, I've got all the wood, the roofing and everything, it's all there, it's just the Johnson Brothers stopped.
Where is it at?
It's in the building right along the city hall.
Oh, it's in the one that's airtight? It's not the one, it's not in the, it's not next to city hall, but.
Community action building.
The community action building, yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
There, there's no materials in there?
There's rolled roofing and stuff. It, I may be confusing the wrong building, but yes, I will sure show is, is there to do it.
There's rolled roofing, but there's no timber or anything.
Uh, that's in the building up the street.
On the other side of the street?
Yes. Yes.
When you say that these buildings are turned over to you, if we go to the courthouse there in your name?
No, they are not.
So Johnson Brothers still own them?
Johnson Brothers still own them, they just want me to come and.
Just by yourself? You got a crew or?
No, no, I don't believe me, I've got people involved, they're very excited to come down and be involved with and clean buildings up.
Cause quite frankly, we've had a song and dance with Johnson Brothers for the last five years.
Yes. I am very sorry.
And we're tired of that song and dance.
Yes. And believe me, I.
That's why the, the, the one building is already under to be demolished. The one between, well, it's not between city hall, but it's next to and then the lawyers.
Uh-huh. Well, I understand, I investigated the song and dance and.
Are you willing to escrow some money to fix these buildings so we know you got the money there?
That's my next step, yes.
But for? How much are you gonna commit to?
Um, right now, it's just as far as sealing the roofs and getting dried up. And then, before it's ready for the public, we'll do, obviously, as you all know, it's a big project and has to be done in stages, yes.
Now, is this a continuous project in your mind or is this gonna be a project that you worked through somewhere and then?
I don't know, actually, you can thank my wife, she's a history buff and she really wants this to be continuous and she's educated me in the history of this town and, yes. It, it will be a continuous project and be involved with the renters coming in and maintenance and it, it is something that will not be just.
What is the viability of you coming up with paperwork showing you to be the owner?
Um, and in fact, I went by the Johnson Brothers' house just before I come down here, they're not in town and that's the first thing that I wanna do before they do another step.
Cause I'm gonna be honest with you, personally, I'm gonna have to see some paperwork.
Yes.
That, that shows that you are the owner and we are actually dealing with a completely different ownership.
Yeah, but Dave, what I hear him saying is, they're not turning the buildings over to him legally, he's just going in there and being the fixer upper for the Johnson Brothers and they're gonna retain ownership. Am I correct?
As of right now, that's the way it is, yes. And the point is, before I'm gonna invest the money and the time and any more of your time, they're gonna have to do something different. Because of burning the bridges and the commitment and, you know, a lot of talk and they haven't done it.
But they've certainly burnt their bridges in this town.
Yeah. That's what I hear.
I think they've done it in Minnesota too.
That's what I hear, yes.
And trust her.
Well, the thing is, I, I really need to be proven to that the city has spent, quite a bit of money. Quite a bit of money that in reality, if we would've taken that same amount of money and put it into that building, it'd be almost done.
Right.
So just the legal fees that we're talking about and the expenses to us, I'm gonna have to see something in paper that shows that we're dealing with totally different subject.
Okay. And, and that's what I wanna hear from you guys and I agree a hundred percent because again, if I'm gonna put this time and time and money into it, I can. So.
I'm a little confused, I guess, why would you wanna do all this if you have no skin in the game?
Um, at first, that's what I've.
I don't, I guess I don't understand, I understand the love of doing something, but with these guys' track record, I, I just, I, I agree with Dave a hundred percent, I mean. We gotta, you're gonna have to prove to us and with some kind of a third party engineering outfit that.
Right.
These buildings are even worth saving because I mean, it just, every year, just another song and dance.
Right. Well, the first thing I wanted to come here today and just show you somebody standing here and I understand that and as soon as they're in town, this is the conversation I'm gonna have with them. And if it doesn't go the right direction, I'll come back and tell you, it just isn't gonna go.
I'll be honest, I'll be open minded with this, but I'm gonna have to see some proof.
And I think we proceed as planned until we see that proved.
Yes.
So you better, if you want, if you're that committed to saving these buildings and doing this, you better get on the ball.
And that, and that's my point is, is as soon as they come in town, that's what I'm gonna tell you. This is it, guys.
That's the problem, as soon as they get in town.
I, I.
Well, you know, two months from now, three months from now, you know.
Your phone needs to move quick if you wanna, if you wanna do this, that's my.
And as you're doing this, I understand you're having trouble getting ahold or return calls.
They just, like, walk to me, please, for me to get ahold and then you guys, because they come in and yes. And as soon as they get ahold, before the next city council, we all sure come down and, and let you guys know and communicate. That's, I know that's the number one thing that.
Are you a licensed contractor?
I have been, yes. And I will be a licensed contractor to take on this project and do that and I'll have all that paperwork and everything, therefore it goes on.
I'm sure we'll have to have a licensed contractor, we'll have to have liability insurance and in order, I would guess, I can't speak for the council, but I'm guessing they're gonna wanna performance bond before they turn back to do, to do anything different again.
Yes. And, and again, and the first thing I'm gonna talk about the Johnson Brothers, how much damage they done, are they gonna willing to do just what you've all said? And if they're not, I will gladly come and tell you.
Well, I don't think there's too much turnaround around on the community action building. I think we've already made.
I think the community action building is past where it could be saved. I mean, anything can be saved, but.
We have to look at the viability of, of the investment.
Yes.
And, to be honest, most of us sitting at this table are pretty fed up and that's, the public, you know how much we've gone through with this, it would be awesome.
See, a lot of the, some, there's some of these council people that haven't been here as long as I have, but it's been a, a sore spot with this council since I've been on it. I'll mention the Johnson Brothers name.
Thank you, you kudos for coming before us and you bringing this subject up if you wanna know the truth.
Thank you. And if I can save the buildings, I'll try, if I can't, that's all I do.
And we ask you just to be open and honest with us, that's all.
Yes, that's the first thing I wanna do to the council, yes.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Joe, Lily, need to crack that door open? Is actually, is there a sign on the door?
Yes.
I don't think the sign is gonna cut it.
There is a sign. There's a door out to the left. Up here is, it's a bad, bad bump.
Okay.
Uh, that was in color, it's got the original signatures for after these. It's parked here when I went around here. Does that make sense? It depends on color. You don't like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a reference to the speed bump I put in, on the traffic, those are here. I'll read this. Aunt Harvey, my wife and myself put this together. With the underside, would like the approval of the council to keep the small gravel speed bump in the alley between Baltimore and Albany. Over the years, the traffic in the alley has been increasing due to temporary library, then the addition to the Bethesda Lutheran School, next came the addition of Boys and Girls Club. And as you know, the temporary library, it's closed. However, the influx of traffic still increased due mainly to the Boys and Girls Club and church. The use on review, use on review permit called for a drop off and pickup with the children in the back parking lot has never been enforced. People are still using Baltimore Avenue, Fifteenth Street, using the alley as a shortcut. Summer is promised and traffic from the church will increase once again, that made it Boys and Girls Club. Right now, the alley traffic has decreased dramatically with the speed bump in place. It's been there about a week. We haven't had our much traffic in there at all, except for city employees looking it over and our neighbors. We now have more children living and visiting in our block than ever before. The safety of those children is our primary concern. The dust and noise generated by the speeding vehicles is secondary to safety. This alley intersects with East West Alley between Sixteenth and Fifteenth Street. This intersection is blind in three directions. If you have an alternative plan that will achieve the same results, we would support your plan. If not, we'd appreciate approval of our resolution. And, uh, I know a lot of you guys, uh, a lot of the, the problem area you have in town, dangerous, put up a stop sign, you wanna put up a stop sign for me in my alley? I doubt that.
I guess I'm understanding, apparently somebody must've told you you couldn't have it.
Pardon me?
Somebody must've told you you couldn't have it, is that what's going on?
That's right, but nobody's proved to me that I can. All these people that have signed this paper, they're all living in that block. There's only one person, one neighbor that has, that isn't in favor of it.
Okay, I'm speaking on behalf of that, my mom lives next door and we live right, like, in the alley, we're right next to him. He asked everyone around us, not us, we're the one that's in the alley, he should've came to us and asked us. And where it is, where it is, you have to back out and my mom being a girl, lady, she has problems turning, so where it's at is a problem for us, it may not be a problem for you, but.
Where are you backing out of?
If we back out of the garage, I have a garbage trailer and it's just me that I have to pull out. I don't have a man in my life, so, if I'm gonna empty that garbage trailer, I have to pull it out and then I have to back it up, I've only pulled it a couple times.
Sandy, if you need that dumped, you can call, just ask me and I'll go dump.
What, I'm gonna call on a guy every time I need something done, I can't do that.
That's porch use.
Well, you, it's a porch use, so you're not coming over and asking.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't come and ask. And the reason I didn't, I hollered at Sandy to ask her that she had a problem with that and.
In the way it was done.
No, just a minute, I'm not done. And you said yes, I have a problem, went to the door and I asked you what the problem was, you took off, went to your house and slammed the door.
I just got home from work, you don't give me time to set and think about anything.
I'm not gonna argue with you down here.
No, I'm just saying, the thing of it is, where it's at is a problem for us, I don't have a problem with the speed bump. You wanna speed bump in the alley, go for it. I don't like where it's at, move it. I should've been asked.
Could we just move it?
And I also have a question too, like, if.
The reason I put it there Sandy, is because Jake, the preacher next door, usually by the time he gets there, he's doing about twenty miles an hour. And he goes through that intersection, I'm surprised he hasn't gotten hit yet. He doesn't look either way.
See, I don't notice as much traffic as you guys do, but the thing of it is, if you can go out into a city alley and put something in, why can't anybody else and tell you that?
Well, there's a lot of people that would like this. So I, I don't know if I'm gorgeous or not. And I know that, I know that bump is pretty harsh and I could level it off a little bit.
Is it, is there supposed to be a certain height on it? Is there supposed to be a certain length?
They're actually illegal.
If you haul it in, is that your property or his facility? If my son was to go out there and get hurt, who's gonna pay his doctor?
On that bump?
Yeah. You guys are so worried about it.
That bump is there to protect your son.
He doesn't know how to ride his bike, if he goes over and breaks his arm, who's gonna pay the bill?
I think what we should do is maybe have the public works committee go up and take a look at that and see what we want to do in an alley for alley maintenance. If it's something that is gonna help, maybe it should be moved, they might come up with some sort of. If it's something that is gonna help, maybe it should be moved, they might come up with some sort of a solution that helps.
Well, if I could move it right to the end of my garage, and like I said, it's a little harsh, you know. I, I gotta slow way up to go.
Did you try any other avenues before just putting it in, Dennis? Did you talk to the city?
Pardon me, I talked to Mr. Berth, and actually Dave told me to dip a ditch, and I thought it was easier to put in a bump.
We've been dealing with this problem for years.
But the problem I have with it, we just can't have people going around the public rightways putting speed bumps.
Well, what are you gonna do about the traffic?
Well, we need to discuss that, maybe figure that out, and talk to the church too, maybe just see if they can't, and we can't go with the use on.
I've been up here, I've tried to be a good deal. I called over to the Boys and Girls Club, I don't know how many times, asking them to please abide by the use of it. And it just seems to go in one ear and out the other.
Would it be such a thing as, for this Boys and Girls Club, if we could have Harley or somebody just write them a letter saying, we would appreciate if you would re notify your people that you're not supposed to be using 15th and, and.
Baltimore?
Yeah, that'd be just another Johnson brother idea.
Well, I mean, that'd be, it could be, I'd agree with you, it could turn out that way, but at least, you know, we could start with it, and then we'd know that they've been.
I think, haven't you talked to, you're on the board, right?
No, I used to be.
On the board?
Yep.
Well, didn't you talk to them sometime?
Yep, they have told me, it hasn't been for a couple of years now, but they get a little bit frustrated because they can't always get the parents to take the kids to the back. They have the same frustration you do.
Well, the school bus is even, not even at here to it anymore. The school bus is on the 15th Street, that's the end. And then the kids get out screaming, holler all the way around the corner. I mean, I, I put up a screen with kids, 'cause I have on the line, I'm gonna scream with kids out.
Tell you what, why don't you look at that in public?
I've already thrown over it.
Okay.
And in my opinion, we just can't be thrown in public rightways, that's my.
Do you guys think the ordinance gets it?
Well, not today, but did I have.
So it's a big one anyway?
And I have not found where it's illegal.
According to Chief of Police, it's illegal. I'm not talking about yours, one on the street, 'cause it's liability, the city, if somebody goes over that, wrecks their car, it's city's fault.
If you look at that picture right there, they bladed that alley two years ago, and when they got done, I think the guy was trying to do a good job, I give him credit, 'cause it's the first time I've seen a blade in that alley in thirty years. No, I think it's the second time, the first time it was me. I worked for the county, and I had two semi-loads of gravel dumped in that alley, and I come up and blade with the blade. And then the city came around, about a year later, dug half of it out and put it in front of Sandy's house, which was her grandma's inn, 'cause it was just a muddle.
And it still is a muddle.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that bump, you see the, okay, let me see that. This, this is my bump, right? This is the alley running the other way, yeah, that's the colored one, you can probably see better, but that's the alley going east and west. Them holes are deeper in my, and worse than my bump would be, you know, really. And when are you guys gonna do something with the alleys? They come in here and blade it, they had a window on the roadside of the alley, and I, I pulled the in on our, us and Sandy's side, turned the in with my, with my rake. The other one I didn't, was piled gravel that high. Thus, that's why you got the holes in the road. And they're deep holes, see the rainwater in them, they gotta be down there eight inches deep.
Well, take a look at that as far as the bump was concerned, that across alley, and then Frank, let's have Public Safety look at, at the speed issue, is there something we can do? I don't know that there is.
Is there a speed limit in the alleys?
Yeah, it was pretty fast.
I think it's fifteen, the alley's twenty-five streets.
It's like I said, Sandy don't live right on the alley, but Mrs. Malhoff does, and I don't, the guy behind us, Lassie, and there, Mrs. Malhoff been in tears for years over the thing, but we're really affected by it, we park our cars back there, so does Sandy parks them back there too.
Well, as the mayor said, all we can do is take the Public Works, have them look it over, then have Public Safety take a look at it, and then get back to you.
Okay, in the meantime, is this, is the bump gonna stay there?
It's gonna stay there until we make a decision.
Okay, what I will do is I'll redo it a little bit.
Okay.
So it isn't so harsh, but the rest of the neighbors said, no, don't take that bump off, because it had really slowed the traffic up, I mean, like, I'm gonna say three quarters. They just, they know that bump's there, so they just don't go through them.
If it stays, can you move it to accommodate them?
Where's it at, baby? I can't tell.
If you'd been to my house.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, right at the end of my hedge, that's where it is, right across the road. See here? Right here is my hedge, and Sandy's driveway or drive is right here. And aren't my fish.
No, is it close to the east-west alley?
No.
It's in the north south alley.
Why can't, I know it is, why can't it move it closer to the east-west alley so it don't?
Because it's like on the other side of the garage, other side of the driveway.
That's what I'm saying.
Then it would be okay, 'cause I backed down this way and turned.
I backed my bull in there twice in the last two days.
You're a man, you've done that for years, I'm a woman, I haven't backed a trailer up, you've had me twice.
Sandy, how many times have you ever pulled that trailer?
I pulled it a couple of times since Billy was six.
So can I put a bump on my alley too?
Billy's not there no more, I don't have nobody.
Maybe after, maybe after we look at it a little, we'll go up there, Dwight and I can go up and look at it, and you, whoever, just the Public Safety. We'll go look at it, and it is such a, all we have to do is move it a couple of feet one way or the other.
Okay, if you guys say this is against the law, Bobby Joe said so, why hasn't somebody found out what the law is?
There is no law.
Not up on me.
The concern is the liability, if, if, if it's in the public rightway, and somebody comes racing through there, and a bump hits off, and they hear and run over somebody, or something like that, the liability falls back on the city, and that's where the concern is, as far as the liability, if it's in the public rightway.
And I, and I will say, if you guys hit that bump at five miles an hour, your head's gonna hit the ceiling probably.
What about emergency personnel going through there? They don't. We're all, we all have.
Yeah, we have, we have ambulances and cop cars going through there all the time.
You're all, you're all.
I think we need to work with the Boys and Girls Club too, and tell them to keep that front door closed, and you will not pick up your kids here, this is not what your permit says, you will pick them up.
Well, that's a use permit on review, preview.
Pretty easy fix, you just ask the school to put somebody standing there when you're loading and unloading students during that time, it's just like having a, a traffic guard for crossing the streets after school is over, you just get the, get the school to have somebody man that area.
We would really like to see if we can move that Boys and Girls Club, like, if they own a memory or something. Yeah, I'll donate.
That's not viable at this point in time.
Now, I know you guys got a year, but I think it doesn't draw it up, and I didn't go to that council.
Everything's open on that building still, but it's just gonna be some time before we make any decisions.
We'll take a look at it.
Hey, that Boys and Girls Club, we ought to have it, I mean.
I'd say the first thing is, like I was saying, if we could go ahead and write them a certified letter or something saying, hey, you need to do something about this, then we've got proof that we have done it, and then I have no idea what, or where we could go from there, but at least we've started something. And as far as the bump is concerned right now, I guess we just leave it there until the two committees of, I'm sorry, Sandy, but until the two committees of.
I don't have a problem with the bump being in the alley, I just don't like where it's at.
Right, and there could be such a thing that we just come up with an alternative place for it to be, move it closer to Baltimore or on the other side.
Yeah, you guys look at it, if you don't move, don't move it, make it less harsh.
There, there, there's just, you're right there. There was one thing that was brought up, John did have a suggestion, and it was in, it was in, during a discussion that we were having over this, but we could always visit the fact of evacuating that alley.
Yeah, yeah, do it.
Thank you.
That's we can't get in and out of it.
You evacuate that alley, that's where we park our vehicles and get into our garages.
But there is a north-south, eastward.
But the one property would get half the alley, and the other property would get the half, and then nobody.
Still have alley running the other, obviously.
That's how that works.
Yeah.
If the owners would take over that property, and they still be able to park their vehicles in there, it would be to their, to their property line, it'd be under their control.
The only thing I see out in here, hopefully it don't, but if we allow that in there, so they can be in every alley in town?
Well, that's why we need to review this.
You don't make a big mistake out of it, I'll tell you.
Oh, I'm just saying.
Well, everybody, everybody here is, boy, hey, this Wilson, man, he's got a real deal going here. Hey, I should go to work for them then.
Let me, let me digress back to before I came to the council and became a council member. The year before, I came before the council, when, what was that lady that we had? Carleen was the mayor, and I said, we need to do something about Fifth Street, it's a racetrack up and down that hill, I'd like to have a speed bump put in at Spring Avenue and Menacada. So we can't do that, that's, that's liability for the city. I said, is the city gonna take liability for one of my grandkids being killed on that street?
Yeah.
And they pooped me and said, go away.
Well, you know the, they just gotta redo it at their age, right? Well, I've seen, I've seen people come by our house, and don't hit the stop, don't stop at the stop sign, probably going thirty miles an hour, and a spark gets fly, I think that's nice. You, you guys, the speed bumps are way worse than mine.
And, I think.
Thanks, we'll take a look at that.
Thank you, Dennis.
Yeah, I know you're gonna change out of there, what you've got to put in there.
Heidi.
Okay, thank you very much for this, Sandy, I'm sorry that I didn't come before, and I wanted to be a good.
When you, when you spend some time moving or looking at it, just take her into consideration when you figure out another place.
Yeah.
That'd be, that's common sense.
Well, you know, I, I park back in my alley, and like she says, oh man, I've learned some very cool stuff. It's, it's easy for me.
Let's move on.
Okay, thank you.
I got things to do.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maggie Velkey, oh, hi, Jeffrey. Okay, I'm with Helpline Center, and you probably know Helpline Center operates the 211 Information Line, which is a free twenty-four hour service, you can answer questions and do referrals to social service agencies, nonprofits, and government offices. And the council has supported us in the past, which we really, really appreciated, and I just, I wanted to come down and kind of give you an update on what we're seeing with numbers and things, and I hoped to come a couple of months ago, but at that point, we already had our report kinda in the works, and I thought, well, I would have more information if I waited a little longer, so. Anybody that calls 211 gets a live person on the phone, and they are, callers are asked to provide their zip code, their age, and their gender, and then at the end of the year, we can use the zip code information to pull out all the, all the information specific to the Black Hills, and that goes into this community trends report. So that's what, I'm gonna try to just kind of hit the highlights in about five minutes, because we just have a lot to, to get through here, so, and if there's some extras there, if anybody else wants to look at them, but. So if you, if you look in the middle panel here, it shows our calls were last year up to nine thousand seven hundred and six, and the reason for that, they're up about fifteen hundred or close, no, not that much, thirteen hundred. The reason for that was with the storm Atlas, we took close to two thousand phone calls after the blizzard that went into the storm, so that was really the reason for the increase. And if you look just to the right of that, the zip codes let us break it out a little farther as to where the calls are coming from. Southern Hills were actually down in two thousand thirteen, and I don't know, I don't know why that was, but we didn't have as many storm-related calls from the Southern Hills. And I don't remember if two thousand twelve would've been the fire year for you guys, or was that two thousand eleven?
I think three thousand seven was the big fire.
The big one. I know there were some higher numbers that sometimes were based on whatever disaster was going on, but the other thing is, those are just call numbers too. People can go onto our website and search our database for the information they're looking for as well. So down here in this other corner, you can see we had over eleven thousand individual searches of our database last year, and more than two dozen of those were people looking for services in the Black Hills community, so some of those could well have been Southern Hills residents as well. Our callers ranged in age last year from ten to ninety-seven. I know we had ten-year-olds calling, looking for food for their families, so there's just a real wide range of, of calls that come in. Most of them are information calls, more than half of them, and those are calls from people that know what they want, they just need to answer, maybe they need to know the, the food pantry hours, or what documents do I have to take with me to renew my driver's license, things like that. Thirty-eight percent of the calls are referral calls, and those are calls where somebody needs answers or help, but they don't know where to start, maybe they're looking for summer programs for kids, or council services that specialize in a particular age group, something like that, those would be referral calls. All the calls that come into the call center are documented and categorized, and if you look over on the left side, this classification list, the basic needs category is pretty much always at the top of the list, most of the calls we get are for basic needs, housing, food, utilities. Last year, that was actually the second, second of the ones, even though the call numbers were up because of the, what is it, this organizational community in the national services category includes government services and disaster response, so those numbers were lower last year, so that bumped that into the, into the top. Same thing with this individual and family life, that's in the, was the third most number of calls, that's usually part of the list, but that included people asking about volunteer opportunities and, and recovery assistance and stuff, so that was that. Our mental health calls were down, mental health and substance abuse calls, for whatever reason, by quite a bit, from nine hundred and forty-two in two thousand twelve to six hundred and four last year, so I'm not really sure what that means, I guess. The other thing that this report lets us do is kind of identify if there are areas where there aren't services available for people's needs, and those are the unmet needs down here in the blue table. Housing was first in that area, those are situations where there either aren't services available to help people, or they don't qualify for what's there, or they have exhausted the resources that are available. So a lot of people looking for help paying deposits for rent, or moving costs, things like that typically are not covered. And transportation was second, there are people looking for help with car repairs, bus tickets. I know we're getting more calls from people that are on their way to North Dakota, to the White Hills, and they've gotten this far and run out of money, and they're looking for gas money to get the rest of the way, which is typically, it's hard to find a, a resource to help them out. Our call center also answers the suicide crisis line for the entire state, and our numbers in that were pretty consistent, I think we had a hundred and forty-eight suicide related calls in two thousand twelve and two hundred and forty-six last year, so those numbers stayed pretty steady. This back page is pretty much about the, the storm, and as I said, we didn't have as many calls from the Southern Hills that were following the blizzard, but we did start getting calls in our call center on Friday of that storm, as the snow was kind of piling up. Initially, people whose power was out, and they're looking for emergency shelter or road code or information, things like that, and then through the weekend, it started to be more calls about downed trees and limbs, and that ended up being the bulk of the calls that we dealt with, sixty-seven percent of them, I think. Got a lot of elderly and disabled people who called with trees down on their driveways on the neighborhood property that knew they were gonna need some help with that. And then as the snow kind of let up, and people were able to get out, see, kind of see the damage, then we started hearing more from ranchers who had cattle missing, and fence lines down and things, looking for some assistance, and also from people who wanted to volunteer to help or to donate to their relief funds. So we took calls for these things weeks after that, and normally the calls that come into our call center are confidential, we don't keep names or numbers or anything, but this was a different situation where we keep names and addresses and phone numbers, and we were able to put together a report every day that went to our emergency management office, and from there, it went to the, the BOAD groups that were doing disaster recovery, that's volunteer organizations active in disaster, Red Cross, Salvation Army, Lutheran Social Services, and Catholic Social Services. And they had a committee set up that just specifically dealt with volunteers, and so they were able to. they were able to take the list that we had of callers and, you know, go out and put this address in here and here and here, and help with a lot of the tree limbs over down, and saw all kinds of stuff. They did a phenomenal job of coordinating all of that. So that, I think it overall went pretty smoothly, but of course, you know, we lost some things along the way, too, and hopefully we're just better situated for another year when we do have some bad fires or more storms or whatever. I think we're just in a better spot to be able to handle the next thing that comes along, I guess. So that's kind of the five-minute nutshell report, I guess. If you've got questions, you can answer them, or you can contact me, you know, later through 2-1-1. I guess I didn't realize you had so much of a volunteer in the call queue. That's interesting. Yeah, yeah, and actually, we applied a couple of times for Grant Lee trying to set up a volunteer network. Eventually, we hope to have a 2-1 website where people could go in and say, I wanna volunteer, and I want to work with families, but I can only do it Saturdays and Tuesday nights. And it would, the software will then automatically pull up whatever opportunities there are in the community that you're, you're going to use in your career or whatever. And, which would also be a real big help to a lot of the organizations that rely on volunteers, you know, to be able to kind of have them come through through that mountain. So that's something we're kind of working on in the future, but yeah, we really have a lot after the storm that.
I know that all volunteer organizations here have cut back so much because they can't get people even to join, kind of, but something like that would be good to take together.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have our fingers crossed on that, for sure. Yeah. And thank you again for your support in the past. We really do appreciate it, and it's helping us to do more. Thank you.
Anyone communication for the public? I see a friendly face there. And it is a friendly face. Which department is taking care of the cemetery right now? I'm Joe Lux, for those of you who do not know. Who's taking care of the cemetery?
Streets.
Streets? Extend my compliments to them. I was up there earlier today. It's making really, really nice, Memorial Day especially. Cemeteries are hard to maintain and keep up, they're just the nature of them. I just want you to know, I appreciate it. Tell the crews out, you did a great job.
Thanks. That was good.
I'd real like to hear that.
Yeah.
Any other communication for the public?
Yeah, when do you guys plan on putting your roof on down to Plunge?
They said they have to have three days where it's about seventy degrees, and they hope to have it done before the end of May. And it depends on the weather.
Okay. Any other communications for the public? Continue. Personality, you can see them listed on their agenda, the changes that happened in the past couple of weeks. Like to make a couple of appointments that we missed, and a new one to the Housing Preservation Commission. Carol Anne Schwarzenbach and Pat Leck should have been on there probably six or eight months ago, and we missed them. It'll be easier by moving everything to December. And also Steve Weenie would like to be on the Historic Preservation, so I would like you to put those people on the Historic Preservation Commission.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Carl.
Second.
A second. Discussion and questions? If done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And like making one appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Flint Jeske, and his term would end December thirty-one, twenty seventeen. So a motion to approve that. We'll move. Second. Motion and a second. Discussion and questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And Carol isn't here yet. I think I'll back up to this in a few minutes on their own business on that Keel Eastman. She's got a copy in front of us, but if she's here, I'm sure we'll have questions. So let's go to new business, and we'll come back. We've got the twenty-fourteen, fifteen malt beverage license renewals. There's a list of them in your packet. I've talked with Bob Evans, and he says he doesn't have a problem with any of the, any of the renewals at all. So it lists the council, we have questions about one or more of them that we can pull out, otherwise we can adopt all of them at once in one motion.
I'll make the motion.
It's about a second, man. Got a motion and a second. Discussion and questions? To approve anything you might not want to act on in one. Got a motion and a second to approve the malt beverage licenses. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And the stop sign at Sixth and Cambridge, I think that's yours.
It is mine. We've talked about this in public safety, which my co-partner was gone. It's going to be quite a problem. I think we have to take it out.
Why is it a problem?
Well, I've talked to a lot of people, and people just don't stop. I sit down there and I see people drive that thing all the time. They're not speeding, they just drive to the stop sign. Because you can watch, they got a speed limit just signed there, and they're not speeding. They don't stop. And I don't think we're having a problem with speeders, I just think we're having a problem with stopping them.
I've had constituents that live close to it that say they want it out. Is that a motion, Rick?
It is.
All second.
I have a motion and a second to remove the stop signs at Sixth and Cambridge. More discussion?
Do you recall that petitions had came in when those originally went in?
Yes, and I've talked to about seventy-five people last month, and probably sixty-eight of them or more want it taken down, and the other ones don't care. Either one.
I personally don't have, I don't have a problem removing the sign, because I've heard more complaints about it, but would it be better for us in this situation to let the public know through the paper that we are reconsidering this? Means they did come to us with so many honor to give them, give them a chance to come to us and just give them the right to speak in defense of the city.
Good. There's only six people in that petition.
I know, I remember. But I'm just saying.
There's a whole lot more than six that was against it, but they didn't come forward.
Like I said, I'm just looking to make sure that somebody doesn't come across and say we could slam dump them without giving them any chance to speak.
I think we ought to keep the stop sign on Cambridge.
The one going on to Sixth Street.
Yeah, coming on to Sixth Street.
I agree with that.
Keep that one.
Is that an amendment to the motion, then? There's three stop signs there now, right? It's a three-way stop.
It's a three-way stop.
And the motion is to take down all the stop signs. Did we put up all three, or did we just put up the two?
We put up all three. Ain't red. One was a yield sign.
We changed it from a yield to a stop.
My theory is you don't put stop signs on through streets, but I mean, we had some confusion about what a through street was versus where they were, but you all know how I voted on this issue in the past.
And that's something I could bring up with public safety, the rest of the stop signs on Sixth Street, being on the wrong side, even on University.
Right, and you did have a short conversation with Bob.
I'll amend that to leave the stop sign on Cambridge.
If it's going forward, let's take a look.
No, I agree with Dave Burris. I think we should give the people that did the petition an opportunity to come forward and talk to the council first.
Providing Brett puts this in the paper.
I have a second down here from Dwight. Change the motions, I read with you. More discussion? The motion is to remove the stop signs on Sixth, but leave them on Cambridge as the stop sign.
Can we table this until the next meeting, so we can do that?
Table it.
Yeah, I'll table it until the next meeting.
Motion to table.
Yeah.
It's about a second. We've got a motion and a second to table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Table it until the next meeting. Okay, fire and fireworks ordinance, you've got a ordinance in your packet. This could be a discussion item, or if you'd like to, you can take action tonight, but this could be a first reading. There's a lot of changes in it, but mostly it gets through the ordinance, it's covered by state law. So it's up to the council what you want to do, if you want to act on it right away, or if you want to wait until you get it done, so more chance to look through it.
I think we should put it on the next agenda for action.
And there's no change in what happens on before the Fourth of July. If there would have been a change in there, I would say do it tonight, so we have time before the Fourth. But there's no change, it follows the same, same city ordinance. So you want to wait two weeks, that's not a problem. We'll put it on the next agenda.
I think you got to table it.
Oh.
Don's fault if we do it.
Section nine.
I did do it. I did do it, Don had to.
Call me and tell me which one.
Yeah, we can get together.
Right. Thanks. We'll put that on the next agenda. We've got a request from Carol to close, I think it's Main Street, behind the Flatiron. Good, Main Street. It is?
Yeah, behind, not, not, not.
Behind. The one we talked about last week. Four days during the summer, like she did, or very similar, at least to what she did last year. There was no recorded problem with that, and I heard a lot of good things about it. Just for four days?
Individual days, not four days. One day on time.
I was gonna say, I could see a problem with food charge, but four individual days, okay. I make the motion to do that.
Second, man. Got a motion and a second to approve holding the street. Any more discussion?
And none of your neighbors have any problems?
No, I got permission from MAMA last year, and they're all in favor and very supportive of it, so it went really well. And they brought in a lot of extra business to cut in, too, so they're kind of like a guest, actually, after this move. But I have a full agenda on the motion board, and there's a postcard right there, and it's on my Facebook, Flatiron, South San Francisco, the full agenda. I've got twenty study members, and then there'll be more drop-ins, too, and then we've got Lily sponsoring the first one, they got the alcohol beverage permit for that, that we contain within the next one. And then we got T and B Barbecue, the vote, and we like it. So we have hopefully helped a bigger turnout this year, so.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to approve. Any more discussion? Questions, Carol? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And change order for Simon, on that change order says it's a decrease, that word's supposed to say increase. It increased the contract by fifty-nine thousand. I entertain a motion to approve the change order. They're all done now. Got a motion of Georgia? Second. And a second. Discussion and questions? What was the key order for? Why was there such a decrease of twenty-five percent? That was done through the public works, additional pounds that came up in different sections of town, a couple of different alleys that needed some work.
Twenty ostensibly more than the original.
And there's still some that need done.
Yeah. You have a spot. That's for sure. Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? I want an order to, a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And, hello Carol, we're gonna go back up to old business, and here is the Keel Eastman, but we might have some questions of you. Our council's got a copy of the two Eastmans. We've got the Eastmans in front of us.
Okay. These are, this is a rough draft, but it's the approach that I'd like to take as far as the verbiage, it's the width of the roads, the gates, who is responsible for the construction of those gates, deciding who the gates belong to, and what kind of gate it might be. Also, maintenance, if you want a nicer road up there, who's responsible for that? This Eastman is not ready to go, because I've contacted Anderson Engineering, and they're going to run, take their GPS and just go down the existing road and get GPS points, so that we'd get a drawing, so we know exactly where that is. So that piece of paper will also be recorded with the Eastman at such time as we do record it. So I'm very interested in knowing, is, are the terms of the Eastman anywhere close to what, okay, so you need to tell me what you want.
I thought we agreed on no gates, it was gonna be open to the public, that's what we kind of agreed on.
I won't vote on this if there's a locked gate.
I mean, we've discussed this over and over. I don't understand what, where it was unclear.
We want it open to the public. If it's gonna be an Eastman for them.
So are we thinking cattle guards?
Well, cattle certainly fine. But if it's gonna be open for them to drive up to our property, I want it open for the public, too, if they want to. I ain't gonna have a gate, locked gate down there, where they can use the Eastman and the taxpayers' hot springs can.
I wouldn't even care about it.
I won't vote on it.
As long as it's not locked.
Yeah, as long as they leave the gate open, that's fine, they can have the gate there.
If we use cattle guards, there won't be necessary, it won't be necessary for a gate to happen. I think that's the issue. I.
So are we willing to pay for the cattle guards?
Why would we? We're not putting cattle in there.
Well, I just, I just need to know the answer. I don't, I'm not arguing we should, I'm asking, will we?
Well, we've expressed our desire, I don't know, for about two years, so I guess we'll...
I don't see a problem with a gate, just that it's locked. I can see what Craig's point, I mean, why, a gate actually detours people from just constantly going in, we have to clean up, and whatever's going on in there, but a gate is okay, just not locked.
The Realtor, Ron Gredine, is here, too, I think he has something to say about this. Ron?
You bet. Appreciate you calling on me. Yeah, I think we got headed down a path we don't need to go down. I would give an authority by the Keel family to trade Eastmans, apples for apples, and so forth, and as we explained the last time I was here, it's been roughly a month ago, the gate issue is up to you and new owners. Happens to be a gate there, that's fine. It's not the Keels' intention to have a gate there in any manner. It happens to be there right now, and I think it's almost more a city issue of you, right now, want people driving up in the back of that land. If you do, we have, myself speaking for the Keels, have no issue to that whatsoever. The gate's there now, and I've said all along, anybody that holds a right to that Eastman can have, can mutually decide whether they want the gate locked or not. As far as there being cattle, cattle guards or anything, I think it's an issue, I don't think there's any cattle or fencing on it at this point that would preclude, there'd be a need for cattle guards.
So we could eliminate that number three, the fencing gate item in this Eastman?
Well, you bet. I guess, you know, that's more Carol's call than mine, since you're the attorney. There's a gate there now, and I guess it gets down to laws that concern gates, but if both parties own an Eastman, and you, the city, decide you just want to let people drive in there as they wish, number one, and I'll back up, so I say it's the thirtieth this month, we're gonna sell that property, it's not gonna belong to Keels in thirty days. And the people that buy it will knowingly purchase it, knowing that there is a public right of way up to their land. So there's gonna be no argument there. So really, it's the city holding the cards on it, and you guys can lock the gate or not, if you decide you'd rather, you know, you guys certainly have a key to the gate, you can have it anytime you want. If you decide it's gonna take the gate off, the new owner can't really hold that all. The Keel family has left things wide open with me to make any agreement we need to move forward with this. The one issue I'd like to bring up, Carol, and I talked with Harley a minute about it, and again, I'm, beggars can't be choosers, I'm the guy in here asking for this. The ten-foot width restrictor situation, I kind of question, and obviously, two vehicles can't even pass on ten feet. I'm aware that there are a couple of points along that trail right now that cars can pass anyway, it's physically not possible. But certainly, folks, forever's a long time, I think I'm looking maybe after, more after But certainly, folks, forever's a long time, I think I'm looking maybe after, more after the city side of things than I am after my client. But you're gonna be passing through over both of these people's property to get into yours. And if you're only getting a 10-foot easement, let's just say 75 years from now, the city of Hot Springs decided they wanted to subdivide that land. They wanted to sell one loft or build something else back there. 10 feet is not very wide, in this day and age. Just because you give an easement doesn't mean it's used, it's just there for future development, and forever's a long time. I always just was taught, I give the maximum, and, uh, especially this little different type quarters in the city of Hot Springs are dealing with feet. When you're talking about acres, to give a 40-foot or a 66-foot easement, it's there for the future of something's needed, and we can't foresee three generations from now.
Is the fire requirements for 66?
I'm wondering if that's a county, I mean, there's any, I think, when you start trying to subdivide the county, they're gonna ask for a 66-foot easement, I think, that's kind of the norm today. But you're not sitting here telling you have to do it, or that, or gonna block if you don't.
I agree 100%.
It just, I realize there's areas where, right now, there's, probably isn't 15 feet there, but that doesn't mean that the creek channel wouldn't be moved over, and rock build in, or something. If someday you ever decided to put a simple little two-lane road in there. One thing I mentioned, if you take a 90-degree corner right there on the old railroad, the old railroad bridge, a pickup and a trailer can't turn on 10 feet. I'm not sure I can turn my super cab pickup on 10 feet, take a 90-degree turn. So I guess I just ask you maybe to take the feet of that little thing, and other than that, the gate issue, you guys, I realize there's been some friction in the past over that gate. Once that auction's over on the 30th, that gate can go away, if that's you guys' desire. You want people running back in there wide open?
The only, the only, sorry to catch up. The only thing that I think we need to consider about a gate, doesn't necessarily, even though we say we have the ability to put one there, is in the future, if we start to have problems, and need to have law enforcement go out there, or decide, determine a certain closing at, at a day, you know, time of the day, that having the ability to put up a gate would be in our benefit. Just because we have the ability to put one up does not mean we have to do so. But if it does become a problem in the future, it might be something that we want to have as a tool to be able to utilize at that time.
Maybe a day use area or something.
Exactly. If, if we're put in that situation.
I just want to make it clear, it's not coming from my side, anything about the gate, it's.
I appreciate you bringing this up, about the 66 feet.
I think the 10-foot is what I was given to work with. We talked about widening it, making it wider down towards the county road. The way the road lays right now, where, after you go through Baby Keel's Gate, you're right up against that rock face, and between the cliff and the rock face. And, um, there isn't a lot of room, but there's room, I mean, if we wanted to do significant changes there, there would be a lot of room. We were talking about 24 feet at the beginning, and then trying to let it narrow down, but it might be just simpler to put, you know, the smallest city lane is 20 feet. Maybe that's where we want to go, but I.
Well, it's not just me, like, your people are willing to do whatever we want to do, so why, why wouldn't we just shoot for the best? Let's go wider, and we can always, years down the road, I guess, if they want to come back and squeeze it down, do that. Why, why always shoot ourselves in the foot? Why not make it as wide as we can and just do something?
66 foot?
Yeah, do a 66, there's a lot of property up in there that's fire.
Is there enough room on Dave Keel's property to get 66 foot between the buildings and the?
Yeah.
Until we have a surveyor, I don't know.
Definitely.
Oh, there's a lot of room besides after joining my owner as a state.
The only problem I see is where she's talking, that the spring in there, and if we widen the road, we're gonna be covering the spring up unless we put a 300, 400-foot culvert in there.
Well, this just, this.
I guess I gotta go along with Wes.
This gives us the opportunity to do it, we need to.
I'm not saying not to do it, I'm just saying that's the only problem I see.
I used to deal with easements, so, and that, you know, you build a power line through or a water line, you build it so that your pickup can back in and work on whatever you're doing, and you're still on the easement. Parallel through it, you know, perpendicular to it.
I think 66 is the way to go.
They, they look at two fire trucks meeting each other, is that the reason they do 66 feet?
I guess I don't.
66 foot is a standard section.
I think it's two fire trucks meeting each other, or better.
Well, it's a possibility with the easements there.
Going back to the well later is always tough.
Exactly.
If we're willing to give it, and doesn't mean it's ever gonna be used, it's just there.
And I'm looking at the gate situation the same way, just because the ability is there does not mean we have to put one up.
No, I've got the feeling, and again, you can do as you wish, the, the gate, you're both gonna have a key to it, and the day you decide, hey, we don't have to have public, whatever going on in the back of that, open it up, the new owner's gonna be fully aware of it, and no problems from the new owners.
Okay, so we want to keep some gate language, or just keep it out?
I would prefer to keep it, just as, just as a tool, or lead, it's necessary in the future.
Well, as it states in here, in that, uh, last sentence, the gates may there, they lock the device. So with the may in there, I'm fine with it.
Yep.
It doesn't mean it has to be. The problem is, is it is permissive, and if you get someone up at the, totally at the other end of the easement that wants it, you're gonna have a hard time saying.
No.
No?
Yeah, I, I understand, but, but the thing is, is if it becomes unpopular use, we all, we all seen what's happened in some of our parks, they're taking places away from us because of the rubbish being thrown and the abuse down the land. You do want to have to be able to control that. But we're in the driver's seat at this point. Yep. If he, he'll make it aware the day of the sale, but, you know, the buyer can work with the city, I mean, that. Is it possible to put in there on the gates that both parties must agree?
Sure.
As far as locking the property, would anybody be in agreement with that?
Just leave the lock right out of there, just leave, leave the locks right out of there for now.
All I'm talking about, the gate, if both parties would have to agree with the gate.
And if they don't agree and we do, then we'll be going to court.
If you have nothing on there, you're still gonna go to court.
If we got nothing on there, we got a better chance of winning.
Carol, can I ask you this? On a, on a regular easement, I mean, that's what we're talking about, a regular easement. If you've got an easement for two neighbors, and one neighbor wants to lock a gate, what happens? That's kind of loaded question, but I mean, without any language, in a, in a typical easement that you deal with.
Then you can't, it is a free passage with a lock on the gate.
Are we really talking more, Carol, about a, a private easement than a public easement, when we start putting restrictions on? I'm just asking, I'm just, just a thought, but.
Well, the city has other places that it does have the ability to lock, I mean, the parks, you can lock, just to control access.
Is it, is it, is what we're asking making it more difficult, you think?
Well, I think there's a lot of kinds of locks these days, and that's the reason I wrote it that way. It doesn't necessarily mean a padlock, it could mean a code, it could mean all sorts of things. And as it does say, it may be locked, doesn't say it has to be, or will be.
I'm just trying to cover the city's responsibilities for the future. That's all.
I hear you.
But, but, let's, let's go around the other way. We wouldn't even be talking about this except that the gate of the county highway has been locked, and is, was locked three mornings ago when I was up there. So, so we wouldn't even be discussing that provision if that gate had kind of traditionally been locked. So, so you can look at it that way, it was always open, and our, our part of the easement is totally open, there's nothing there.
And Carol, then I just ask you then, in a, in a, we're talking about a dedicated public right of way? Is it, we're not talking about a dedicated public right of way?
We're not dedicating this to the public, it's an easement to the city, which is different than a dedicated public right of way.
So are we really talking now, as I said before, are we talking about a private access easement?
Well, it's different than a, than a, than a, than a planted public easement, where you do a dedication to the public, we won't have a dedication to the public.
Craig, is that what you're wanting, or is that what?
Well, to me, the taxpayers own that land.
Well, yeah.
And they have all the right in the world to go there anytime they want, in my opinion.
But so.
They can go into the parks if the gates are locked, if they want.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but from that, I don't see why, say, Keels, they, they locked, not Keels, the new owners, locked the gate, and they're driving that easement, but they won't let the public up in there. See, to me, that's not right.
Well, I'd be a bear of mind, Craig, if we put it in the right perspective. They're not, the Keels have not stopped anybody from going into the city land, they've just stopped them from crossing that road. And of course, that's what you guys are gonna get now, is an easement, not to cross that road. So I guess that I'm saying, you guys should get all you can take at this point.
And that's why I say.
We're willing to give.
Do away with the gates, that way it's an open road, then later on, they can come to us and work with us. Because ultimately, we would like to open that up for day use, for hiking and biking and stuff like that.
Yeah.
We don't want to go beyond our property, onto this property yourself.
There's people gonna be living out there, so I can't really see people driving up in there trying to trash the place. That, that's just my opinion, and if it does come to that, then we'll talk to the landowners then, and say, you know, maybe we need to control this at nighttime, you know? Something like that, but until we have the problem, I think we have to just forget about the gate.
Common sense, Sylvia, and I'm not speaking for a new owner, but as kind of pristine as that whole thing is going to remain, like I said before, it's never gonna be developed or subdivided. I've got the feeling your new owner's gonna, gonna appreciate a little privacy too. If the city happens to turn it into a full-fledged park, I mean, we're talking 50 years from now, or whatever, people realize that. But I think short term, they'll probably appreciate the fact that it's kept a little exclusive. But I think they'll work with the city, and at this point, I've got the, given you guys the authority to take whatever you want, give me the same in return, but I would encourage, the more, the better, at this point.
Well, I'm only one person to speak, speak from my mind, I'd like to board everybody else's.
I really believe we need to go to 66 feet.
I have no problem with that.
And as far as blocking the gates, I don't think we need to go, it says may in our contract, and I feel like that's fine.
Yeah, but it says may, okay, it may be closed to unlock.
That you can decide on later.
Yeah. I'll vote on it for they, about the gate lock. You guys, I mean, there might be a lot of trouble.
I'm sure if there's a problem with the gate, the landlord's gonna be okay with you guys putting the gate up, because if you take it out of there, I don't think this is gonna be a issue. Landowner ain't gonna want to get trashed if they're either, as you know, or as certain would think, they're gonna control the public or whatever, I'm sure he's gonna say, yeah, it's probably.
I'm sure the new landlord, there's two houses, as you go in, and they're gonna either rent those or live in them, let alone the cabin up there. There's gonna be a lot of people living there, so I, I don't foresee somebody trashing it without being seen.
Yeah, the other thing, Craig, just from your own knowledge, and it's not really, not public knowledge, so I can make a statement, but immediately after this auction, we're going to sell that key, those Keel houses.
Or.
They're gonna be out of this, they're gonna be out of all of the county.
Isn't this, oh, they're moving the houses?
No, I don't know if they're gonna sell the houses.
So, different people live there.
What, where David lives now.
Yeah.
That, that piece of property is a separate property. It's also separate in its easement, that's why David signs one piece, Nancy signs one piece, the city signs one piece. We're talking about three, and actually four entities, that's this whole, I didn't, Jenny, this thing we're talking about. But it isn't any secret that the Keel homes are gonna be sold also.
They already have placed a gate, so you cannot drive up to their house from, from the piece. So. On the city land? Well, no, they're gonna come in, right to the gate that they have, and then they hang a left and kind of go up a little hill, and then they have a gate hung there, but they're, that's going to be their new control point.
And that's common sense, I mean, once they leave, you can't go from the city property onto theirs, I mean, that's just. Now, this property's gonna be turned over to the Elk Foundation, is that right?
No, there's an easement at this point already on it, been on it for several years, where the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation has, when you say an easement, it's their coveting, coventhing, I always pronounce that word, coventing, that there will not be no subdivision of property or any further development of it.
So it'll be private ownership, but they, they're gonna go under their, their.
Continue to be in private ownership, it's just the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation has placed those deed covenants in that state, so it'll never be subdivided. At least as far as I know, it'll always stay in private ownership unless someone donated to them or something. Really, the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation has what they want now, they've got the easement, um, this one, this one with the landowners.
Carol, I would go a different direction here. From the easement, from Keel to the city, you have under the construction and maintenance that, uh, that the sole expense will go to the city or to Keel. And then from the easement from the city to Keel, you have the maintenance being all for Keel or their successors.
Okay, and the first easement, David.
Clarify that more.
Yeah, David Keel to the city, uh, and to Nancy Keel. We're the grantees. Okay, so if we want to improve the road, the grantee, which is the city and Nancy Keel, would have to improve the road, not, not David Keel, assuming nothing changes, okay. And the city easement, um, to Nancy, for that part that Nancy's getting, Nancy is gonna have to pay for, for the, for the piece that covers, crosses the city. The whole point is the grantors aren't gonna be pushed into making a 66-foot, or 20-foot road with 20-foot shoulders. But, but in all reality, if they want to improve the road all the way up there, every, everyone's gonna have to work on it because it crosses so many different pieces of property. And that's one of the reasons for keeping the easement kind of narrow, is it would be hard to then go and make a big road without everybody agreeing. Although, I do agree that if there's ever a time, now is the time for the city to get more easement, especially on the David Keel side. However, we will have access through the, assuming the railroad right-of-way transaction goes through, then we're going to have access onto our property from the water piece of property as well. You know, it's a possibility that that rock face could slide off. Just so you know, I mean, and we don't want to be in the position of ever happening to move half of that.
Well, I disagree, but that's just me.
Or you think.
I want the wide easement, all the way, I mean, just.
And we can, well.
It's not costly, you think.
Exactly.
Wes, I'm not arguing about the easement, what I'm saying is we don't ever want to be forced into having to. Improve the road if there's a landslide, that has nothing to do with the, the.
Well, then I guess we don't even worry about it.
But we would be forced on the easement that Keel's given us.
No, you wouldn't be forced, only if you wanted the road to be bigger.
You're working with two different Keels here, you gotta keep that in mind too, you've got a Nancy Keel and a David Keel, so you've got, when you say Keel easement, you gotta specify which one.
We want the wide easement on everybody.
Okay. So are we gonna vote on the gate, or are we gonna take a poll, so I know what we're gonna do about the easement?
Correct me if I'm wrong, um, Carol, but just say, and again, back to it, in a typical situation, someone wants to, you're crossing, an easement crosses four properties, and someone along the route wants to improve the road significantly. the route wants to improve the road significantly. In a typical situation, that developer, subdivider, or whatever, would be responsible for that development all the way through. They don't, you don't just send a guy, Bill, and say, I want to develop this road, I need $80,000 from you. The developer of it, let's just use an example, if the city of Hot Springs wanted to develop the backside of that land, they could not force whoever owns the two Keel properties to pay for that road. Now, vice versa, let's just use the example that, there was no easement on, well, the easement or not, the people that own, and sell this land too, the backside, they decide, we're going to build a million-dollar house back there, and they have to pave the road in there. There is no way they can force the city to pay for that paving.
It's their deal.
Okay, that's, I think that's what these guys are asking us.
Yeah, I, there's no, that's not the problem, my concern is, is that rock face sliding off and the city having to move that?
Well, and I guess, let's explore that further then, it isn't uncommon that there can and will be some rock come off of it, it's happened in the past. If it's something that's, you know, that's a half-a-day job with a payloader, I'm sure that between the city and the people that own up there, they get together and figure out a way to take care of that. If it was something catastrophic, again, the same story, I don't think the people of the road can obligate the city to remove that rock.
No.
I think that's what these folks want to hear.
That's when we build a new road out the street.
That's exactly right, Craig, because if that goes, then we'll have to, we'll have to grant an easement to those people to go across the other city property property.
It would only be, that'd just be a common sense deal, but more than likely, there'll be some, every time I drive down it, I kind of peek up and go, this little nerve-wagging.
So where are we on the gate, do you know, Carol?
I'm not stern having to have the gate or the ability to put the gate, I'm just saying it's something we should visit. You guys want to drop the gate, that's fine with me.
I just feel it's written way, Timmy could go either way, so May is the response.
Actually, it sounds to me like this easement made with these two people is only going to be good till the end of May, and then we'll, then we'll be working with the new guys?
Well, when you say working with them, it's binding upon, so absolutely, whatever the Keels sign today is binding upon, so their successors will sign.
Theirs and successors, and the easement runs with the land, because it's a recorded easement, so, once we all agree as to what we're going to execute, they'll be recorded, and it will be there, so if the.
The people buy it that way?
The people buy it that way.
If they already have gates to both their assets, both their houses, they have gates going to the old ones into one of the canyon, is there really a sense in that one by the road?
No, well, I.
Even if, even if the Keels were going to stay there, let's use that example, Craig can bring up, if David has a gate, as you turn up his driveway.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's fine, you got no problem with that. If they want to lock their gate up at the building, way up the draw, you got no problem with that. It's, your rub has always been the gate that's.
Coming off the main road, yeah.
And I agree that at that point, if you guys don't mind whoever just pulling in there, as you mentioned, then I don't think, even, well, David might, but for the next 30 days, they don't care. And the new owner is, they're going to understand that it is some type of a public right-of-way, dedicated is not the word to use, but it's a public easement.
I guarantee you, if you get it out of there now, and the new owner, we approach him about, well, we want to control this as day use area, I guarantee you, the new owner would be on board with putting a temporary gate in, I mean, who wouldn't?
And you know, think about it a little bit, just, as, that could just as well be forest service property or something, where they don't close the gate. I mean, people, I think, understand that, right now, there's a gate, it's been an issue, it's a rub right now, in some ways, but if it was just a county road up there, it's not going to deter my sale. People are going to buy the land because there's a lock gate on it, or not.
The gate to them two houses, I set back far enough for a 66-foot right-of-way, where they can.
Technically, what I'm really here to achieve, that will help the sale of our land and vice versa, is a legal access of that canyon for those folks, that it really is the only viable way into that canyon, it could be, something could be muscled in there, but it would be very difficult. So the question is, does the gate stay or not, yes or no? I think you've agreed to a 66-foot easement, I'm hearing, and those are the only two, if satisfied with Carol's discussion on the maintenance, if what she says is what the easement says, and you agree to that, there's no change need to be there, so you gate in or out, and change 10 foot to 66, and you're there.
So there is only one.
So agree or disagree?
Gate or gate, two gates.
Right now, it's only one gate.
Only one gate.
What would happen if we put wording in there, the gate stays open unless both parties agree to shut it? And the gate stays in there, but it stays open unless both parties agree to shut it?
Or at least unlock, unless both parties agree to lock it.
Yeah.
Open too, I mean, just so there's provision, or they don't have the kit, go to lock it right now, that's what we don't want.
Then you can put a sign on there, please close gate, I mean, if you're worried about it being open or closed for any reason.
That way, if people do start trashing it, we can talk to them and close it at night and open it tomorrow.
So we're going to say that gates stay open, and that means the gate physically open?
Yeah, that one and out the bottom.
I want that, please, you all agree with that?
Whatever you guys want, I.
We're going to be willing, we're going to work with anybody, but our whole deal is just get us the same access they've had for years, I mean.
So we kept the gate, and it stays open?
Yep.
Okay.
Now, can I, as a proffer Harley to bring up, is everything okay with this genus deal we've cut? Is that, are they all aware of this, is that all? I believe they are, there's a purchase being negotiated for the railroad right-of-way through the city's 97 acres. We have to have it platted in order for a sale to go through, and that's the next step that Carol would do, is to hire Anderson Engineering or somebody like that to prepare a plat for the purchase, and then also have the center line of this easement showing on a survey document, so there's no chance of somebody moving the 66-foot, 100-foot this way, or 100-foot that way, they know where the center line of the right-of-way, correct me if I'm speaking out of turn, Carol, anywhere here. But that has to happen down the road, so the easement could be approved in its current format, and then the exhibits would be added once Anderson Engineering has those completed.
The need for the plat is just to establish a legal description, you just can't get away with calling it the.
The old railroad.
Railroad right-of-way between the two trees anymore.
Yep, between township this way, the railroad sold it that way, when they sold it, but it was all of the railroad right-of-way that came through on a really old map that they used for descriptions.
And we are hoping to, you know, to put this really on the front burner, I'm not going to make any guarantees to the public that it's done by the auction, which is scheduled for the 30th, but boy, we kind of need to have it done by June 30th, hopefully we can get.
Yeah, and we're going to, I mean, we're getting there.
Carol's done a great job, and Mr. Ginsburg, we've been working with Harley, you guys have been working together very well, appreciate it.
Does the county have to approve any of this?
Not the easement, but they will have to approve the plat.
The plat, I mean, it's, I shouldn't speak for the county, but I mean, it's just housekeeping, it's a, we're making a plat to establish a legal description.
Thanks.
Thank you guys very much. You know, you might think about adding on to your holdings, if you've got a little money in your pockets.
You said it right there.
A little money that joins you, you know. Thank you folks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Just my clarification, the attorney will correct that, and it'll be on for final approval on the next council meeting for the easement.
Right, and I'm going to talk to Anderson in the meantime, and there may be some tweaks on a legal description or two, because I didn't get to the courthouse, I'm working on office and other ones that I was given, so there's still some checking to do, but I just wanted to get our lang, us all together on the same language, more or less.
Yep, so we'll have the final easement for the next meeting.
Yep.
Or easements, okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Meeting reports, Carol, did you have?
Yes, we had a meeting, May 14th. And we talked about the show your pretty face contest that's going on, and the city has put up $500 for materials only, not for any prize money to go to anybody, but as for materials, from, for vouchers, add Pro-Belt for ACE, for the gift supplies, no money. We need a new auditor, we need to get started and get three quotes to pick the best to hire. Our current auditor is no longer doing city audits. Liquor ordinance, Carol has, has it for the final review, maybe for the next meeting. And then the personnel policy, we discussed annual sick leave, annual and sick leave needs for revision, and we're going to find out from the state or the feds which way to go for us to follow, that's all we did.
Thanks, Carol. Public works, Dwight?
Mike Hubbard with Justin Dron was there, and politely told Mike, thanks, but no thanks, and Peter came down. Discussed the RV dump station over here, and what crew will do the concrete work and stuff, and not sure yet who's going to do what there. Discuss Southern Hills water users a little bit, waiting for some more info from a couple people on that. Project updates, Almond Street and the backflow preventer vault, and we discussed the speed bump in the alley, that's about it.
Okay, thanks, Dwight. Public safety, Craig?
We discussed the grass and weed notice, loosens, oh, loosens, and we're going to go up the ordinance, Dave and I, and see what it says, so we can make people mow their lawns and stuff, I guess. We talked about the stops on the Sixth Street, we made action tonight, planning the airport, who's going to, decided to go with Gary Romi, and I guess I'm the only one that has something for that, I don't know why.
You're special.
I am, thank you. We're going to put up some no U-turn signs on Main Street, seeing as how it's against the law, the U-turn, except for two places on Main Street. The fire and fireworks ordinance, everybody wants to get a book tonight, go over it so we can vote on it next council meeting. Safety manual, Harley will take care of things until a safety committee is put together.
Did we ever actually receive any of that stuff on the, in that program I went to?
No, but I brought a manual from another community that should be reviewed and adopted. If you so desire, and I think Mr. Veris was directed to.
I will run that program, no problem, I just cannot understand why the event sent us all that information.
Said, whenever you have a question, call them, and they'll give it to you on disc.
We have vending machine. Okay, sorry, we had to talk about the cats in town. I guess people's bringing a whole bunch of kitty cats in town, that's wild cats, they have them fixed, and then they bring them to Hot Springs and drop them off. And then we talked about the hanger, it was okay by F, eh, 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 eh. The airplane guy's okayed it. All we've got to do is wait for the contractors to get off another job, seeing as they had to put it on hold because we kept putting them on hold. And the proposal at the airport, Gary Romi's going to plant the crops, has hit that cost, we're going to pay what it, he's going to keep a book and tell us what it costs him for gas and stuff, and he's going to do it at cost. And we're going to, when he's done, we're going to get like the feedlot or something to cut it, unless Gary wants to cut it for us. And then, we're going to sell the crops, and Gary said he'd pay us so much a cow, to run his cows in there after we're done, so the airport will make money on it this year. We won't give it away like we did last year.
That's all, thank you, Mr. Veri. Coach, you're right, Wes?
Yeah, we had kind of a lonely meeting, just me and Harley.
We had quality time together.
We did, we bought. But I want to go back on Craig's deal there just for a minute, there's some confusion amongst the police, a fire pit is legal in Hot Springs, and once we get this ordinance reviewed, I mean, it spells it out, because the police have been telling people, you can't have one, and you can't, it's in there, there's provisions that go along with it, but it is legal.
You have to have a spark arrester, it covers the fire.
Anyhow, we, we talked with Chris down here, we've got another unit that is shot here on the Mueller Center, so we're going to have to fix it, hopefully we'd have done before in South Dakota, in other words, it could get a little warm for them, but.
Is that the one we just had worked on a while ago, by Nelson?
It was the one that was replaced two years ago, and the wrong chemical was put in it, and it blew the warranty on it.
So who put the wrong chemical on it?
Are you ready now?
Are we going after the contractor?
It's you guys.
If they boo-boo, we didn't.
How long of a warranty did it have on?
I mean, if we put sugar in water, five people might complain about that, that's a boo-boo.
I don't know how long the warranty, it may be too late. We'll have to, we'll have to look to see, we might be too late.
Anyhow.
Air conditioning unit?
It's the theater unit that, you know, was the first one that went out two years ago, and that unit was the compressor or condenser, one or the other went out, and they put a new one in, instead of replacing the whole unit, they just fixed part of it and part that circulates the chemical within the unit itself.
Well, I don't know, he said they put the wrong, or they put a universal refrigerator in there, I don't know, the ins are out, I don't know if that's really what did the warranty or whatever, but that's, it's what, it is what it is, I guess, at this point, I guess I.
You know, we, we talked about it a bunch a year ago, I mean, when you fix something, you don't just piece build it, you fix the whole thing, and it would be a piece build here, bits at a time, and the last one, when we redid the whole unit over here, you did the whole unit, and that's what needs to happen on the theater side, the whole motherboard, the whole works and the whole system needs to be.
Well, it's 30 years old.
It's 30 years old, it's the original one that is in here from David. It's thirty years old, it's the original one that is in here from David, yeah, with the exception of the condenser, compressor unit or whatever that was, two years ago.
So we had a report from.
My, my question for you was, have we got any pricing?
He's working on it right now, I believe he does have a price from G and R Controls or somebody, he's working on it.
Yeah, he's still working on, he's working on three estimates.
Okay, we can beat the warranty horse later on and just get this job done.
Cindy gave us a report at the library, things are going pretty good up there. And then we met with Matt, and that's where we spent most of our time again, was working with Matt, trying to come up with some dates for some public, I don't know what you, I guess, what you call it, but a public forum, I guess. And we chose June. Do you remember what that date was? I think we went with the twelfth, I believe it was a Thursday, did we?
Yeah, it was Thursday, yeah.
And there'll be some ads coming out in the paper here eventually, and we're gonna meet again before, kinda nail everything down, but I don't know, they had some real kind, they had some creative ideas, and I think it's gonna be kind of fun to see how it turns out, but the problem is, you know, going into summer or ever, there's just, every weekend, people have stuff going on all the time, so I, I don't know, I hope the turnout's good, but we'll see, I guess. Anything else, Lyle, do you remember?
I thought he wasn't there.
Oh, he's here. Okay.
That's about it. Thanks, Wes.
Boy, I'm sorry, Lyle, I didn't mean to exclude you, at the beginning of the other meeting, he wasn't there.
He's lying to me.
I just wanna make mention that the Southern Black Hills Realtor Association are doing a fundraiser for kids. Tickets are ten dollars, they're gonna sell two hundred tickets. Let's see, it's a Kids Two Thousand Fourteen Raffle, so they're raising money for the projects that they do for kids in the area, so we always have to make mention of any raffles that are being held in town. Wanted to make mention, we were, had several thank you notes after the city decided to sponsor the scholarship for the Miss South Dakota Pageant. They list the names of all the councilmen and mayor up front, dear Lyle, David, everybody here. One, thank you so much for the generous supporting, for generously supporting the Miss USA's, excuse me, Miss South Dakota Scholarship Foundation. What an exciting announcement we received from Steve, the director, for this surprise additional contribution. This particular gal was, your contribution of these scholarships for these young ladies is important and valuable. She was a contestant in two thousand four, and she has returned every year afterwards and actually has served as a judge for the Junior Miss Pageant that was there, and it's, this gal is the executive director of the Iowa Rock and Roll Music Association, so the word got out all over the place. Another one came from a group in Redfield, their daughter was the nineteen ninety-six participant in the pageant, and they've been enjoying the Black Hills and enjoy coming back and have not missed a pageant since nineteen ninety-six, so they're returning each year to the community. So a five thousand dollar donation that went along with this particular one, same thing, you know, dear council members, Lyle, David, Carl, you know, on down the line. I want to personally thank you for your scholarship commitment to the Miss South Dakota and supporting such a great program in Hot Springs. As a former Miss South Dakota of nineteen ninety-seven, she was very grateful to what the program had brought to her, and she would not have been able to do the education that she had done had it not been for these scholarships, so it's important to keep this in Hot Springs, and we look forward to seeing you every year, so they've all been saying that, one of these is a legislature, legislator from District Ten, you know, state senator from District Ten, so that's some pretty influential folks that recognize the scholarship that the city finally did for that program, so I think that's kudos for that. Wanted to make mention that we had applied for a second round of grants for the broadband initiative. They only allowed the people that had received the grant the last time to apply again, which I thought was strange. We were, had a limit of five thousand dollars and we were issued thirty-eight hundred dollar grant for computer upgrades, so it's stuff we're budgeting for anyway, so that just goes to help offset some of our ongoing computer needs. Wanted to make mention that Matt Frydale, of course, has been working on the parks plan, but Kevin Norby will be in town on June thirteenth to work with that committee, starting at noon that day on the golf course master plan. And as long as we're talking golf course, the rounds in two thousand thirteen for April was five hundred and ninety-nine rounds. The rounds this year for April were nine hundred and seventy-three, so we jumped a great, if May is that good, we should have a great jump to starting for the summer. Wanted to make mention of the candidates forum tomorrow night, they asked, the chamber asked that we announce that starting at six P M. Candidates for mayor, candidates for Ward One council people, sheriff and county commissioners are on that list for, for that. The Fall River Conservation District is part of the commemoration of the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of statehood for South Dakota. They are planning on planting an oak tree in every one of the county seeds in all of South Dakota, so we need to tell them, one, if we want the oak tree, which we do, I'm sure, and then where we might wanna put it, what park, wherever we might wanna do that, so Matt, working with on the master plan for the parks, might be a good resource to do that, but I, we have to let him know by the twenty-fifth of May whether we're interested in taking the old oak tree. We got bids for painting the depot, they're, the low bid was right at ninety-four hundred dollars. I'm not sure if, we had budgeted ten thousand dollars for the depot, we spent about two thousand dollars on the items that we've done so far at the depot, so we would be over budget if we went forward with painting at the depot, so I need some guidance from the council on the painting at the depot.
I already gave you my opinion. Coach Kevin tied his low bid.
Say again?
I told Harley, we need to go with Kevin's sides because he has low bid on that, we need to go forth with it. We've been talking about it for years and just not doing it, we need to get that.
Well, that's the question, because I told him it's over budget not to do it, so if the council wants to do it, we gotta find the extra money to put in, which won't be a problem, I don't want to do it. Well, if nothing else, we'll have these contingencies.
Yeah, right. I think we need to progress to.
I think so soon, too, it's been a discussion for the last three years.
Do we have money in contingency?
Now, you, you had some in contingency, yes, but you're talking, you're already talking about a heating unit at the Mueller Center that was unexpected and.
How much you got in there?
Eighty, I think in the budget, you'd have to look at your budget, but I think it was eighty-three or eighty-five thousand dollars in contingency this year.
Last summer, we had problems with opening the windows because they were just painted. A lady at the depot said that they painted the windows shut, so when did we paint the depot lot? You remember her telling us that?
I think that was when they painted around the windows from the mold and re-glazing in the window. I don't think they painted the whole. Because windows got repaired and stuff, I think that was just from the mold and building builds up around the. Still some plumbing work that has been done down there, too?
The plumbing work has been done, Margaret is still wanting a fan in the, in the bathrooms because she thinks that's, she thinks that's a problem, and she, we tried to get it done last year and had three contractors lined up, and none of them ever showed to do the work.
That's dumb.
And this time, Flint checked it out and the wiring had been totally snapped off, so it would be a rewiring, or you'll have to run wire to to a fan, but to.
You might wanna check with him on that, Flint, because that was to the old fan that's in the window, he said that wouldn't be possible to be operable again, but there's a switch outside of the door that he said turned on the fan with the light, so he always wants to put the thing, as he found out. So there's some confusion on that one thing, so I think that's.
So the fan doesn't work now?
No, I'm talking, Jeff, Jeff, yeah, check with Jeff, I mean, I think he told me it was fine, we're doing outside light. The confusion was the box window fan that we were going to paint, that will, that will be where it's worked, which is.
But I think the point is, is even though it probably is working, just wasn't, you know, how to operate it, it's not effective.
Operator training is what we need to do.
Well, I, I think it's a little both. You know, the comments I received were, we've got two hundred people using that bathroom during the tourist season, and the tourists are the, the depot smells, it's like a latrine for our visitors, and that is not really an issue. So I think we just need to make sure that it is.
It also smells like the fuel oil in the W drink, orange.
And that was my point, is we could put off painting for one more year and, and stay within budget, fix some of these other things.
Well, could we just scale back some of the painting, I guess, is there certain things we could drop out and still achieve everything?
Well, what else needs done down there?
The volunteers spent several weeks down there every Thursday afternoon, and they, they did a pretty good facelift, everything from the inside.
I repeat, what else needs done down there?
Would you then say that maybe possibly upgrading the fan that we have with a light fixture on that switch would help with that situation?
I don't personally know for sure, it just seems like there's a ventilation.
Yeah, there is.
And there's odor, and thanks for reminding me of that, it was the fuel oil and the bathroom. It's just heavy, heavy use, and it's, you know, a very dated bathroom.
We did get some K T water to put down there, it's supposed to sort of hide the fuel odor seriously, so it makes sense, from where that old oil leak was, so, but it hasn't, uh.
Wes has something that will get rid of that smell.
Yeah, that's, I think, the biggest issue.
We just need to talk and maybe do anything.
Not considering.
But.
No, I agree.
I think the real question is, do we wanna go over budget, fix some of the stuff at the depot, or?
Nobody can tell me what's wrong, or it sounds like everything's fixed.
I mean, the painting.
Well, like I said, maybe we can talk to Kevin and scale some of it back.
Was that bid for the whole outside, that's what I had thought of?
Well, it can be, because most of it sands though.
What was the bid on the painting for that, eight thousand?
Power wash exterior and paint two coats with a high-grade exterior latex, which includes all soffit, windows, screens, doors, trim, and cupula. This bid includes all labor material, the rental of the lift, and two percent excise tax.
Does that include anything, Larry?
Says all work is guaranteed for one year upon completion.
Blazing is falling off a little bit, it should be.
This one doesn't say anything about gla- well, it says painting of windows, so it doesn't say anything about glazing.
One of them did, when I looked at it.
Scrap sand, repair holes where needed, repair, re-glaze and repaint all windows, prime any raw wood or patches, repaint exterior three colors, is the next bid.
Yeah, that was mine, a lot of those windows need to be redone, there's quite a few that glazing's cracked out of and.
Dried out and fallen out, probably.
Yeah, and then there's also some holes in the wood that need to be patched.
And the higher bid included glazing, it says. I have painted eight upper level windows, hundred and forty square feet of upper eaves. This one breaks it out a little further, twenty-five hundred square foot of eave, soffit, and.
All I'm saying is, if we're gonna do it, we should do it before all the tourists get down.
I don't know how you'd cut back on that.
You can cut back on it by going one color, because multiple colors make it more expensive.
You can always look at it as a two-year project, you put down your base color first, and when you're painting, upgrading your different color variation, you can do it as a simple job. And that would cut back on this year's budget cost.
And you'd pay more long run because of mobilization the second time, but there's not a lot of mobilization in a paint job, probably.
Moving your paintbrush in your bucket.
Ripping oil.
Yeah, it's the, we're working that high, that whole upper thing needs a booming truck, and the electricity gets turned off, the electricity goes right through the window and you gotta paint around that window and power wash it.
Do they make scaffolding?
Yeah, but there's an eave that goes out, so the boom needs to go over that, and it's the roof's too steep to stand on.
We have a booming truck.
Yeah.
We have to rent one.
That wasn't, uh, it wasn't a rental in that.
Well, what's council wanna do? I don't know.
I would like to see this project get done, we've been talking about this for three, five, four years.
Maybe we find the money in just doing it. I guess I think we can find the money for anything else, so let's just do it.
It's not like it's.
I can do it.
We will proceed with the, with the depot then.
I'll check on the glazing of windows just to make sure we're, we've got apples and apples, because there's, uh.
Yeah, you don't wanna be painting windows if you're, you're not gonna glaze them, do it right, I mean.
We got ninety-three, eighty-four, and ninety-five, eighty-eight is the spread between them, so, you know, right at two hundred dollars if you got.
What was Kevin's bid?
Ninety-three, eighty-four.
I thought his was a, I just lowered it up.
And ninety-five, eighty-eight was, was the next bid up, Minnichottic construction. So two hundred and four dollars.
I guess we need to ask Kevin if he's gonna fix the windows. For that. Or is that, or you just don't paint the windows that need work, just.
Okay.
Well, they have it sound like they all need work, is what it kinda sounded like.
You can see by walking around, what is going on?
Yeah, this city's always had problems with windows. So you can, city maintenance crew, I think, went through there six, seven years ago, did the same thing.
Anything else, Harley?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I've got several items, the pigeon issue on the building next to City Hall, I have to ask for Carol's help for getting an inspection permit or something through the court in order to go in instead of a search warrant, is that close to writing?
That's close to writing. Johnson won't let the city come in and inspect the repairs to the windows to keep the pigeons out of there. And previously, we've used the search warrant powers under the criminal code, and so this time Scott wants to use the search warrant powers that are under the Health and Safety Code, which is chapter forty-three, I believe. And so, under that process, he and I draft a document, we take it to the court, and he has, yeah, and he can go in and do a review of the repairs and whether they were really done, and also see if there's pigeons in there.
I can ask that gentleman, because there's a huge monkey's fault inside that building, you can see the interior.
That isn't even the building he's talking about, the two he's talking about are the ones that are owned by the Hot Citizens for Hot Springs Future, or whatever the name is.
The same people, Hot Springs Citizens for Progress.
The building that's right next to City Hall is one of these buildings, and that one's owned by Robert Johnson.
Individually.
As an individual.
As an individual.
Yeah.
The, the other two buildings that gentleman earlier, that was here earlier, talking about was the other two buildings.
Yeah, actually, and S O S.
Okay. Thanks, gentlemen. The, you've got a copy of the letter. The, you've got a copy of a letter from Black Hills Healthcare Systems. They're proceeding with the environmental impact statement. They would really like to have, although the, the company that's hired wants all the written documentation in by June the sixteenth, which is only like thirty days. So if there's anything that the city says that will be a detriment by the VA closing, we've only got thirty days to get everything written and prepared. We can, you can write it, give it to me and I can submit them, or you can call the information on your, on your letter and submit it directly. That's important, we gotta respond on that shortly.
See, I'm confused because I was under the, I was told that from nineteen sixty-nine state law that anything, any historical building could not be having environmental impact studied on.
I think there's a need for process with the E I S that hasn't been done on the building, that's what I understand. I can't, I can't tell you the law, but that's what I think it is, that's what we're assuming at the state of the V A, V A's, and that's what, that's what, that's where everybody's headed. So it needs, needs to have the E I S. Next item, the ambulance district got a community development block grant that the city assists with by being the entity that it goes through and they've got four hundred and twelve thousand dollars to go towards their building project out there, so that's positive for them. We've been spending a lot of time looking at where we wanna head at the Evans Plunge in the future and we're thinking that we should be going back to wellness and spas and the whole health theme. If we do that, the pool is not handicap accessible. We've got some quotes on a ramp that would go over the kiddie pool end, clear to the north end and wind around and come back down and put people into the pool where that little volleyball court is now. The cost is around twenty-five or six thousand dollars, it's gonna be in that general area. We didn't feel right spending this money without the council knowing where we were headed with the, with the wellness and the handicap access thing. We've got enough money in the capital account, this is what we want to do, but I did not feel good doing it without the council knowing where we were headed. And I've got pictures of fan, if I needs to, wants to look at it or anything.
Do you have a, a plan all around this wellness and health with the moves?
This, this would be a way to get wheelchair people into the pool.
And what I'm asking is, you had here, talking about a whole plan around this health and wellness.
If we take the wellness approach generally at the plunge, that's where we think we wanna head and that's where we think the city wants to head with tourism, everything, spas and wellness and the warm water, the healing aspect. So this would fit, because right now we can't get people into the pool. But like I said, we didn't feel right spending that kinda money, although it's in that capital fund without the council knowing where we're headed. So if anybody wants to look at the drawings we've gotten.
I need to ask a specific question. How do they get the wheelchairs down in or back out of there?
They actually can go all the way down, there's ramps every thirty feet where you can turn them.
Very carefully.
Yeah.
I thought it was like a big slide for a wheelchair.
No, it's a walking ramp with handrails on both sides, but it will also fit, a wheelchair will fit down there and there's places to turn at the ends where, where you can get all the way into the pool in a wheelchair if you want.
The plunge.
So it's not very big grade.
Well, it has to meet the eighty-eight excess, excessive ramp. If we did one ramp straight through, it would be sixty-eight foot long, is how long we would have to go to meet the, the grade.
So does the seventy-two inch rise, that come over the kiddie pool that way, under the slide and then back down and this up to the side of the kiddie pool then?
Yep, it goes across the top of the kiddie pool, clear to the far side where the steps are and then it turns. Then it comes back alongside of that one pillar for the steep slide. Then it turns again and goes to a, we're proposing a little area there to sit so you can sit in water, about two and a half feet, bench in there, and then we continue from there down. There's one piece that isn't on that. That was about twenty-three thousand, twenty-two or three, we expect when, when we get that other piece added in, it'll probably be twenty-six, seven thousand, something like that.
The original spring is piped to the center of the plunge and the city area would be right over the top of that pipe, so there would be the ability for people to sit right in the quote-unquote marketing statement in the original Minnetoka Spring or the original spring, whatever the name of that spring is.
Mammoth.
Thank you.
I thought that was under.
I know it was an M word and I said it wrong and I said it, the Mammoth Spring and they could be sitting in the original healing waters therapeutic.
I thought that was under the deck.
Well, it is, but there's a.
Are you gonna cut a hole in the side?
There's a thirty-two inch pipe called Storm Pipe that runs to the center of the plunge and there could be, I'm told there's drains in it, I guess I didn't look when we, we had it drained up there, but there's, there's vents under the gravel over the top of this pipe where that spring water is coming right out at that point along that kiddie wall, along the, along the wall next to the kiddie pool.
How many other wellness pools have something like this?
They all have a ramp accessible of some kind.
Yeah, they all have.
Well, a lot of them have lifts, I guess, I've never ever seen one with the ramp like this.
The standard lift, there's too far spread between the top of the water and the deck. The standard handicap lift does not work in the main pool. Works in the outdoor pool, because that's a standard pool, but the spread with the overflows for the, for the, way the plunge was built originally, there's too much distance between the top of the water and the, and the top of the deck, but you can't get to the, the lift is not long enough to go clear to the bottom of the pool.
Because I wanna see this with everything else in the picture and it looks like it's taken up a lot of space, that's.
It's the area that's currently roped off now for the other slide, but because you have railings on that, you're controlling where the public is going, so they can't get out into the area where the fall zone for any of the slides are. So you're looting, utilizing what's now currently a dead space when those slides are on.
It's all, it's all space that isn't really used.
Here's the view. Is that the star? Remember sprays?
Yes. They're, they're coming in modules and the modules are set and then pulled together or hooked together and rather than, I mean, some of the original ideas was to pour concrete and then ramp down, then you're stuck with where that's at. Where these are modules, you'll be able to, you can take them out clean if you have to, or if you decide down the road that you don't wanna zigzag them back, you'll be able to turn them and send them straight down, you know, alongside a long way. I mean, it'll give some flexibility to use in that respect.
Do you have to drain the pool to build this?
No.
Why are you making that big deck out of?
This is all.
What is this, composite?
They're sending some components, but it's what boat ramps are made out of that they put down into the lakes.
I think it's aluminum, lighter color aluminum, I think.
Well, yeah.
You've had long discussions about our quality of water and will it react to whatever's sitting in the water and, you know, they decided because of those conversations that they're gonna powder coat it all, so it'll be sealed to the, to the waters, according to them.
I have one more question, are you done, Mr.?
I got three things left. We got a thank you note from Operation Black Hills Cavilin, it's a nonprofit organization up in Custer, and they bring in wounded veterans and their families, they stay up there for a week, a lot of them are missing maybe their legs or something or they're in wheelchairs. Anyway, we got a thank you note because we're participating in this program at the plunge so they can send the family down to go swimming during that week for free, just a thank you note. And last item I have is that the, last time I think that the Kroll, Pete Lee in the airport lease, that lawsuit was done, the Kroll has appealed that, so now we're going to the Supreme Court, probably in September, do I remember, probably sometime this fall, anyways, going back to Supreme Court. That's all I had.
You gotta spend that money somehow.
I, I know we budgeted for an air conditioner at the airport and I guess it was put on hold because we decided the whole unit would be better for the airport because of that old heater. So I guess I'm kinda curious, are we just going through with the air conditioner a lot? Because we budgeted that.
We budgeted the income from Pete Lee too, and we don't have the income, so it doesn't make sense to spend money.
We didn't budget nothing. I don't remember budgeting the income from Pete Lee because.
Hundred thousand dollars a year?
We didn't put that in our budget.
Isn't that in the budget?
No, we couldn't have, we couldn't have, because we were still in litigation at that point, remember that?
I don't remember.
It was the Pete Lee farming income that you put in there that.
But how would we have ever even known that that was gonna be?
Well, it was an estimate that they had given us.
What would we do with the hundred thousand when we got it, Harley? We didn't get it. On when we would get it? Because we have several things out there, budgeted expenses. We don't have the income now.
The carpal was just regular budget stuff that we approved to year ago. That had nothing to do with any of that Pete Lee money, at least in my mind, you don't ever put nothing in a budget that you don't have, I mean, that's. But Craig's right, what are we gonna do? I mean, we, we put money in the budget for the air conditioner, so are we just gonna? What I'm getting at is that old heater in there uses a whole bunch of propane. Anybody that's had anything to do with that can testify to that. Well, you've seen the propane bill, so. And I'm just, I just think it'd be more efficient to go with a different heater. It'd probably save us money in the long run, I would think, certainly.
How, how many square feet are in that building? Do you know?
I don't, I've never measured it, so I've.
How many square foot carpet did they put in?
They didn't, all the rooms, all the. The new carpet looks nice. That was a safety issue mainly.
Is it more than, more than a, a three-bedroom house?
Oh, no.
Is it smaller?
Oh, yeah. It's probably what, eight hundred feet? Maybe it's.
It's less, way less than that.
Oh, I think if you already got a propane furnace in there, you can put in a propane furnace with air conditioning in it.
We can.
Why?
Because it's a concrete floor and where are you gonna run the coolant lines and stuff?
The cooling lines are right in the furnace.
They're gonna run outside the building for the unit outside.
Where is the furnace at relative to an outside wall?
No, it ain't.
I say where is it at relative to an outside wall?
Well, probably ten feet.
Okay, so what's above it?
Can't get that ceiling.
What's behind that heater?
Doorway coming in behind the wall and there's outside wall to the west.
We didn't like the idea of the independent units for cooling.
Should we just put that on the next agenda for you guys to discuss and between now and then we can, we can get those in.
Okay.
Wanna measure that place for us?
All right, that's all.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Take your son, take your son, Berl, and go like this.
I'm hoping you're gonna take your decision for legal matters. I'll figure it out.
Hi.